Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining the County Council's Town Hall at Hybrid Meeting. I'm Jordan Lindsay. We are grateful for your participation and look forward to hearing from your questions. We'll be taking some live questions tonight as well as questions sent through the Q and A function online via Zoom and here in person. If you have a question, please send it there and we will do our best to get to you and answer. If we don't get to your question, we will be reaching out individually with answers at a later date. Now, we also have live captioning in Spanish available for the duration of the Town Hall. To enable live captioning in Zoom, select the CC icon at the bottom of your screen for closed captioning services. Now, I'm going to go ahead and toss it to my colleague, Marsha Salu, who will moderate questions via Zoom. Marsha, to you.
All right. Thank you, Jordan. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will be moderating questions for our residents that are attending virtually this evening. We'll have a few community members who will be asking your questions live and some through the Q and A feature, which I will read. Keep in mind that for those asking questions live, in order to limit any technical glitches, we are only allowing live questions to be asked through audio. When I call on your name, the host will send you a request to unmute your microphone, and you may proceed to ask your question. For those calling in, use your phone's dial pad to press star six, which will mute and unmute your microphone. We will try to get through as many questions as possible this evening. If we don't get to your questions, please note them in the Q and A feature, and the council will get back to you. Please note that if we experience any technical difficulties, we will do our best to remedy them in a timely manner. I'm now going to toss it over to my colleague, Marcella Rodriguez, for Spanish translations. Marcella?
Thank you. Gracias, Marsha. Buenas noches. Este programa está disponible en español para los participantes en Zoom. Pueden acceder a este recurso seleccionando el botón CC en la parte inferior de su pantalla de Zoom. Solicitamos a los participantes tener en cuenta que para limitar problemas técnicos, solo permitiremos que se hagan preguntas en vivo a través de audio. Al momento de hacer sus preguntas, llamaremos por su nombre y recibirá una solicitud para activar su micrófono y proceder con su interrogante. Para aquellos que opten por llamar, usen el teclado de su teléfono para presionar estrella seis. Al hacerlo, silencionará y reactivará su micrófono. Intentaremos responder el mayor número de preguntas posibles, pero en caso que no podamos atender a sus preguntas, los invitamos a inscribir sus interrogantes en la sección del chat, y nuestro equipo posteriormente se comunicará individualmente con cada uno de ustedes. En caso de problemas técnicos, haremos nuestro mayor esfuerzo de solucionarlo lo más pronto posible. Muchísimas gracias por su atención. Jordan, back to you.
Thank you so much, Marcella. Thank you. Now, I'm going to go ahead and toss it over to Council President Evan Glass for some opening remarks, and then all the council members will briefly introduce themselves. After that, we'll move on to your questions. Council President Glass.
Well, thank you, Jordan, and thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. I'm really excited that we are all here in person and online as well as we kick off our Town Hall series, not only for the year 2023, but also for the start of the 20th Council. And I am so honored to be the president of this council, which is the largest council, the most diverse council we have ever had in Montgomery County, and I want to thank all of you for making that happen. But I am really excited to be here, to engage in these conversations. And I'll share with you that when I was working with the council staff to develop the schedule for these Town Hall meetings, I said I wanted the first one to be up county. I wanted it to be north of Rockville because it's really important for our engagement. And I'm really glad that you've all come out tonight because it was a concerted choice to be here, to help introduce this council to all of you. And so with that, I will start the introductions. For those of you who don't know me, aside from being president of the council, I'm an at-large member in my second term, and I'm also chairing the Transportation and Environment Committee. And with that, we'll kick it off, and I'll turn over to my vice president, Andrew Friedson.
Thank you, Council President Glass. It's great to be here tonight. I'm Andrew Friedson. I represent District One, Bethesda, Potomac, Chevy Chase. I currently serve as the vice president of the council. I chair the Planning, Housing and Parks Committee, and also serve on the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee, and I am starting my second term here on the council. Thanks, and look forward to hearing some great questions and having a great conversation tonight.
Buenas noches. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gabriela Albornos. I am starting my second term on the council. I'm one of your four at-large members, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, and also now serve on the Education and Culture Committee. Prior to joining the council, I worked in the executive branch of the Leggett Administration as the director of the Department of Recreation, and it is a privilege and honor to be with all of you this evening. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Marilyn Belkum. I am the council member for District Two. Welcome to the Up County. It's so great to be in a meeting seven minutes from my home, so that's wonderful. And I am one of the six women on the council. We have a majority of women on the council. So I am on the newly formed Economic Development Committee. I'm also on Transportation and Environment Committee, and so happy to have District Two, and look forward to your questions this evening. Natalie.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Fanny Gonzalez. I'm the council member for District Six. I stay right between Forest Glen and Aspen Hill. I am the chair of the Economic Development Committee, and I am a member of the Housing, Planning and Parks Committee.
Hi, I'm Kate Stewart, and I'm the representative for District Four. District Four includes North Bethesda, Kensington, Garrett Park, parts of Chevy Chase, Tacoma Park, and Silver Spring kind of inside the Beltway. I chair the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee and serve on Transportation and Environment, and glad to be with you all tonight.
Good evening. My name is Sidney Katz. I'm the council member for the Third District. My commute was a little shorter than Maryland's. Welcome to the Third District. The Third District is about 85 to 90% within the municipal boundaries of Rockville, Gaithersburg, and Washington Grove. There's a few other areas around Ridgeview and Thurgood Marshall, et cetera. I'm in my third term, which is my final term. We're term limited. I'm the chair of the Public Safety Committee. I serve on the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee. I was the council president in 2019 to 2020. I've lived in Montgomery County my entire life, and a former small business owner and the former mayor of Gaithersburg. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Will Jawando, and you can tell the council has grown because I'm hanging off the end here. I'm an at-large member of the County Council, represent all of our residents. I serve as chair of the Education and Culture Committee. I serve on the Planning, Housing and Parks Committee, and I'm in my second term as well. And I'm a shout-out to the Falcons here at Lakeland Park. I have a middle schooler, too, so thank you for hosting us.
Hi, I'm Dawn Ludkey. I'm the council member for District Seven, which is Up County, so it's Olney, Ashton, Sandy Spring, Brookfield, Derwood, Montgomery Village, Leightonsville, and Damascus. And I serve on the Public Safety and Health and Human Services Committees, and I am the council's lead for crisis response. And immediately prior to coming to the council, I was with the Maryland Office of the Attorney General for nine years in a variety of capacities that I'm happy to share with you some other time. Passing it on to Councilmember Mink.
Thanks. I am Kristin Mink. I am proud to represent District Five, which is on the east side of the county, runs from Burtonsville down through Four Corners, and then it loops out west to include Leisure World. I am a Montgomery County resident, born and raised. I graduated from Blair High School myself. I started off as an MCPS teacher. I taught for a number of years, and then most recently, prior to being on the council, I worked as a professional legislative advocate and organizer. I serve on the Public Safety and Education and Culture Committees, and I am also the lead for libraries. And I'll pass it back to President Glass.
Well, thank you, my colleagues. I am excited to be here with them. I'm excited to be here with you, and I also just want to make some announcements of some special guests who are with us this evening. A number of Gaithersburg City Council members are with us, including Council Vice President Lisa Henderson. Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. Yes, give her a round of applause. We are in the great city of Gaithersburg. Also, Gaithersburg City Council Member Jim McNulty. Gaithersburg City Council Member Neil Harris. Another one of your council members, Ryan Spiegel, texted me just minutes ago and said he is in Annapolis, but he wishes he were here. And we also have a number of members of the Board of Education. I see Ms. Julie Yang, who is here. And School Board President Carla Silvestre is here. And so with that, I will kick it over to Jordan.
Thank you so much, Council President Glass. Now, we're going to go ahead and open the floor for questions with a show of hands if you'd like to ask any questions. I did see this gentleman's hand go up first. I'm going to go ahead and walk over to you, and I'll hold the mic for you, okay? You can go ahead and tell me your name and then ask your question, all right?
Okay. My name is Arthur Katz. I'm mutually identified as the husband of Sim Ostabi, who was the first chair of Emerge Maryland. Anyway, I want to thank the opportunity to share my concerns about the toll lanes on I-270 and 495. This is a mess. The first project criteria for Governor Hogan is, we built it, and you don't have to pay for it, which meant that there was really no serious look at transportation because the only viable transportation that met that criteria was the toll roads. And the second, the, I'm sorry to give you a little background, but I think it's necessary. The second, the Hogan administration made a political, not transportation, decision removing the eastern part of the toll lane projects from immediate implementation, and the result is a, will be, a transportation nightmare because it'll create a choke point where the toll lanes disappear, going from five to three lanes, actually to two lanes, at the old Georgetown Road exit. The choke point backs up congestion into 495 and to 270 split, which means that both of them have a serious impact. And to give you an idea of what this impact is, based on MDOT's own calculations, the round trips for drivers in the non-toll part of the toll lanes from River Road, Clara Barton Parkway, Georgetown, George Washington Parkway, were eight to 10 minutes slower than the no-build option. What I'm, I could go on, but I just want to ask the question. I want to pose to the council, are you going to push for a serious look at balanced transportation solutions, or are you going to throw up your hands and walk away?
Okay. This question can be for whoever would like to answer. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Katz, for the question and all the information that prefaced it. So I'll share with you all, just last week, the council and the county executive approved a state transportation priority letter. And it says a letter that goes to Governor Moore to state what our transportation priorities are. And we said unequivocally that our transportation priorities are asking for more money for bus rapid transit, asking more money for Vision Zero to make our roads safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, drivers, and everybody, and to enhance Mark rail service, and a bunch of other things. And there was a conversation about whether or not we should talk about the toll lanes on 495 and 270. And this council unanimously and the county executive decided that that letter was not the right place to talk with Governor Moore about the managed lanes proposal because we were asking for hundreds of millions of dollars, not only for now, but for the years to come. And Governor Moore has only been in office less than four weeks. The Transportation Secretary, Paul Wiedefeld, has not even been confirmed, but there are still conversations taking place about how we relieve traffic congestion on 495, on 270, and across the entire region. And so what I will say is, we are having these conversations. Governor Hogan, on his way out, was never able to codify that proposal. And Governor Moore has said that he has problems with the proposal that Governor Hogan worked on. And I know that Governor Moore is going to listen and engage with us, and I look forward to that engagement, which we've been missing for the last eight years with former Governor Hogan. And so I encourage you to continue talking with us. I encourage you also to engage with your state lawmakers and Governor Moore and Lieutenant Governor Aruna Miller, who is a transportation engineer here in Montgomery County. And so I'm hopeful that they will listen to us and will engage in a true dialogue. I don't know if colleagues have any other additional thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Council President Glass. Now, I'm going to open it up for another question. I did see this lady here. Hand raise. I will make my way over there as well. You can go ahead and tell me your name. I'll hold the mic for you, and you state your question.
My name is Catherine Katzen, and as you all know, the prior council passed zoning changes that allowed cell towers 30 feet from homes and 10 feet from apartments. I'm curious what the new members of the council think of these zoning changes.
Any council member that would like to answer that can go ahead and answer that.
I'll jump in. Thank you, Catherine. So, as you know, because we worked together, when I was the mayor in the city of Tacoma Park, we worked on our own zoning regarding, our own ordinance, I should say, regarding cell towers. I, you know, wish that some of the work that we had done in Tacoma Park had made it into the work the prior county council did, and, you know, these are issues that are ongoing as we look at our communities, as we grow. We need to make sure there is access to, you know, Wi-Fi and other things in our communities. But as you know, I've worked on this a great deal in Tacoma Park, and I think there are some improvements we can make in terms of how we look at these issues in the future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Now, we're going to go ahead and toss it over to the questions on Zoom. I did see more hands. We'll come back to the crowd here, but I'm going to toss it to my colleague, Marsha Salu, on Zoom to answer questions for Council President Glass and Councilmember Mink.
Marsha, to you. Thank you, Jordan. Our first virtual question comes from Elliot Levine, who has a question for Council President Glass. Elliot? Just give her a few moments. She's on.
Okay. I've just been unmuted. My question is similar to the first gentleman who spoke's question, and that is that, given the county's only lukewarm marginal support for the highway expansion program, why don't they just tell the Maryland Department of Transportation to kill the project? If I can say a little more, I have watched this project for over the last three years. There has been no solid support for the project. There has been fairly solid support against toll lanes. The environmental damages have really never been considered wholly. If they had the whole expansion that they wanted to initiate, we would lose about 1500 acres of contiguous forest and many other damages along the way. You know, it seems that with the advent of hybrid work schedules and Zoom, the whole purpose and need really needs to be revisited. It doesn't make any sense, and a 50-year project at, who knows, $10, $12 billion, and a decade of construction really, it doesn't, really warrants either a serious consideration or simply killing the whole project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. I think I answered some of your question when I was responding to Mr. Katz, but I'll go one level deeper and share with you. I took some notes when Governor Moore nominated Paul Wiedefeld to be the Transportation Secretary. And when he nominated him, he said that there's going to be, quote, "a real focus on local engagement and local support on transportation issues," and that, quote, "addressing congestion does not only mean roads and bridges, but addressing congestion also means mass transit." And that's from Governor Moore. And so I truly look forward to working with him and his administration and Lieutenant Governor Miller to do what we have to do here to relieve congestion in a holistic manner. And so this conversation is going to continue. Councilmember Belkum.
Thank you. As an Up County council member, we do have to look at what the options are. I have always been an all-of-the-above approach. We do need transit. We need good, affordable, reasonable, accessible transit, but we also do need roads as well. When we, when we're talking about Poolsville, Clarkspur, Darnstown, Germantown, North Potomac, whether, whether we would redo these communities the way they're built today, we are car-centric up here, and we do need to make sure that we have access to jobs, access to schools, access to quality of life. And so I fully support the transit options, but we also have to look at roads. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Marsha will be asking the next question.
Yeah. So our next question comes from Mark Disler. He has a question for Councilmember Mink. Give him a few seconds to log on.
Okay, sorry. Now I'm unmuted. My question, sorry for that. Thank you for this opportunity. My question goes to public safety. I first want to say very quickly, I favor the appropriate training of our police and the proper use of force. I favor the use of mental health professionals for incidents where those are appropriate, either in addition to police or in lieu of police, violence interrupters, kind of an all-of-the-above approach. But I have to say, violent crime, according to a memo from the council staff to the council in October, was up 13% from 2020 to 2021, and through the first nine months of 2022, up another 13.4%. So my question is in two parts. What are you going to do about this? What are we doing about it? And are we going to increase the number of police that are able to be on the street? Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Disler, and it sounds like we're pretty aligned philosophically on this issue. We, our highest priority right now, my highest priority right now, is making sure that our officers are not spending time on things that they do not need to be spending time on, so that they can be in the places and doing the things that we really need them to be doing. And this is a theme that I'm hearing from both residents and officers themselves. So to your point about mental health, we have a civilian mental health team that falls under HHS, and we need to staff them up so that they are able to respond quickly and effectively at all times of day, all over the county. Right now, we have police officers who are responding to nonviolent mental health issues. Those calls tend to take, on average, longer than other calls, so it eats up a lot of their time. And as Commander David McBane, the commander for the Third District, said at a community meeting just recently in regards to this issue, police would like to get out of mental health, where appropriate, of course. So the more we can staff up our mental health specialists, the more time those officers will have to spend responding to violent crimes. We also have officers who are needing to sit and, in their words, babysit particular corners and particular locations, and that could be staffed by, you know, security officers. So where we, where we really need our police to be able to be mobile and to be able to respond to calls as they come in, that means that we need to free them up from doing other things. So that's a high priority. And we also, you know, our latest recruitment class was up. It's still not where it has been, of course, in the past, but it is trending in the right direction. That said, this is something that myself and my colleagues on the Public Safety Committee are diving into and looking at very closely. It will be continuing to do so over the budget season.
And the chair of the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Katz, would like to comment.
Thank you very much, and obviously, Councilmember Mink has touched on many items. The, we are very concerned. We're down about 125 sworn officers for the county police force. We, last year, I guess, yeah, last budget, we had a 13% pay increase, and it's my understanding, and we'll know more information this week, but the county executive, much of the pay increases and is bargained through the unions. The county executive has approved, it's my understanding, we actually haven't gotten official word of this, looking into signing, for signing bonuses. As an example, Anarundel County has now gotten to the point where they give a $20,000 signing bonus. Well, we have said in Public Safety, and all my colleagues, I believe, have said that we need to make certain that air competition, if we want the very best, and we do, for a very fine police force, and we do have a very fine police force in general, then we need to make certain that they are receiving the funds and that they want to stay here. We have about 30% that could still retire, and so we are very, very concerned about that. I do believe that Montgomery County in general, in general, is a safe place. That does not mean that there's not specifically issues that have to be addressed, and we need to make certain that everyone is handled in the correct and proper manner. And also, I think it's necessary to say that for our homicides, they have been, they have been closed. I mean, as horrible as it is, most of their homicides are people that knew each other. There have been a few exceptions to that, but most have known each other. The police have closed those horrible situations with arrests, but it's very difficult to have a policing of that type of a problem. We can get into it much deeper. I have a feeling the president wants me to stop, so I'm going to stop, Mr. President.
Well, we have other people who want to weigh in. Councilmember Jawando would like to comment.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and associate myself with the comments of my colleagues. I would just add, to Mr. Disler, we need a plan, too, that is articulated to the public about things that we are doing. There's a lot of disparate pieces. For example, better lighting in public garages, more mental health services and wraparound supports, you know, programs for our youth. A bill was announced just the other day coordinating our nightlife, where we have nightlife, requiring safety plans for nightlife community. That needs to all be laid out and have metrics and be reported on to the public. I will emphasize something that the councilmember Katz said. You know, if you look at murders, for example, which is one type of violent crime, we had half the murders last year as we did the year before. No murder is acceptable. Our police have done a great job of closing out and identifying and bringing those people to justice, but it's going to take a whole set of things and a comprehensive plan to address violent crime. We've had upticks in things like carjackings and others, not as much as neighboring jurisdictions, but that's why we need to free up and focus on those things where we've seen upticks and have an articulated plan that we can report back to you on, on how things are going. I think part of the problem is people don't know what we're doing, and in the absence of that, you don't feel good about it. And so we need to do a better job, and I've talked to the county executive, and I think colleagues would agree on that. Thank you.
And one other colleague, Councilmember Ludkey.
Hi. Just want to thank you for mentioning violence interruption in your question to Councilmember Mink, and to let folks know that there was a bill that passed during the 2022 state legislative session that would allow the state to seek Medicaid funding to be used for violence interruption programs. And so as you've heard all my colleagues commenting about the homicides that we have had, where they're often perpetrator and victim are known to one another, so violence interruption in that context is critically important, and it's coming at it from a public health avenue. One of the other things to keep in mind as we talk about the staffing shortages within our police force, we're down 129 officers. We're down 36% for our public safety answering staff, and that's critically significant. They're strapped, and they're really stressed. And if we want to do a better job of prevention and being proactive and positive community policing model, then we have to have more people so that we're not constantly in a reactive posture. And with respect to the crisis intervention work and world, and we did have a joint HHS and Public Safety hearing on this on January 30th, I was about to say June, I'm optimistic based on today's weather, we talked through that and the landscape and the model and the, and the need out there. But I want to give a shout-out to our fire and EMS providers, too, who responded to 13,000-plus calls that law enforcement and our social work team, the MCOT team, couldn't get to. That's the level of That's the level of need we have here. And so I know, I can count on my colleagues here to say that we're all deeply interested in this and invested in this and keeping all of that top of mind as we move forward in our work. So thank you for the question.
Great, thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and open the floor now again for questions in person here. I did see this gentleman's hand up, and I will definitely get to this side of the room. So I'll go ahead and hold this for you. Go ahead and tell me your name, and you can state your question.
Tim Goodfellow. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm a member of the TAME Coalition, and TAME represents Transit Alternatives to Mid-County Highway Extended, also known as the M-83 Highway. The council was recently sent the announcement of the Montgomery Village Foundation's resolution, which stated their renewed and continued opposition to the M-83 Highway. M-83 is a proposed five-mile highway from Montgomery Village to Clarksburg. It is an outmoded, forest-destroying, billion-dollar boondoggle that will harm neighborhoods and degrade public parkland and sensitive waterways. These harmed neighborhoods are within the county's equity focus areas. Community members within the equity focus areas have greater economic and social challenges than the average county resident. These community members do not need an environmental injustice placed in their backyards. That's what the M-83 is, an environmental injustice. I urge the county council to invest public dollars to expand MARC train service, fully fund bus rapid transit on 355 to Clarksburg, and make improvements to intersections and existing roadways as alternatives to the M-83 Highway. M-83 needs to be removed from the county's master plan of highways and transitways. The TAME Coalition will continue to communicate with the council on this very important issue. I want to thank Councilmember Balcomb for attending the TAME's public hike of the proposed alignment in Germantown this past fall. We will soon be contacting Councilmember Lutke with an invitation to attend a driving tour of the proposed alignment in Montgomery Village. Thank you.
Tim, I can walk again. So I can hike now. Sorry. For those of you who didn't know, I wasn't able to hike this fall because I'd had surgery, so I spent three months non-walking, but I'm up to speed again.
Sure. And I just, thank you. It was really great of you to invite me to come out. And as you know, I do support M-83. The issue is, Clarksburg, the development of Clarksburg was predicated on transportation, and we put 30,000 people in Clarksburg without additional transportation. And I fully agree with the other alternatives you're talking about. MARC rail is critical, and in our deliberation at the TNE Committee, I made it a point that all-day MARC, weekend MARC, has to be a priority. The issue is that it's not within our power. The state has to work with CSX to get a third rail. It's going to be a very complex, costly project, and we need to move forward on that. We need to find out, is it doable? How much is it going to cost? And let's get it on the books. Fully agree. Similarly, with BRT. And up county, we need to look at microtransit. We need to get the first mile, last mile solution to transit. So I agree with you 100% on the alternatives, but I do support M-83. Thank you.
And I appreciate the question, and I'll just close by saying that your priorities and our priorities are the same. We just asked the state for hundreds of millions of dollars for bus rapid transit, check. We asked the state for hundreds of millions of dollars to also support MARC running all day and on weekends, check. And also, we want safer intersections for everybody, including drivers. And so that is what we've asked the state for. We have not asked the state for funding for M-83. We have not allocated funding for M-83. And just for some perspective, I'll leave you with this. There are scores, if not hundreds, of transportation projects that have been thought of over the decades that only live on paper. They've never been funded. And as of right now, M-83 is one of those projects.
Thank you so much. I'm going to take another question here in person. I did see people on this side, and I'll make my way back over here for you guys. Let's see here. I see this. Going to go ahead here, if that's okay. Go ahead and tell me your name. I'll hold this for you, okay?
Good evening. My name is Becky Batt, and I live in Rockville. I do have a similar issue to many, many other people. I'm very, very concerned about Mr. Hogan's plan to widen 270 and 495. So I'm another one. There are a lot of us out there. I live in Rockville, quite close to 270, and the highway is 14 lanes wide. There isn't any congestion. Mr. Hogan's final form of his plan was to only widen lower 270 where I live, not upper 270. It doesn't make any sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you. You've heard my response to a number of other people who are here, and I encourage you to reach out to Governor Moore, who has this on his plate.
Great, thank you so much. We're going to actually go back to Zoom right now, okay? And we'll come back in person for you guys, all right? I'm going to go ahead and toss it back to Marsha Salu, my colleague. We have questions on Zoom for Councilmember Sales and Councilmember Jawando.
All right. Thanks, Jordan. So our first question comes from Gail Spence for Councilmember Sales.
Yes, I would like to talk, ask a question about, how do you ensure that there is diversity in public contracts outsourcing? I mean, when I see go down the roads and I see our roads being repaired and maintained, I don't see a whole lot of diversity. And maybe that's not an issue, but how do you ensure that all residents in Montgomery County are getting equal opportunities to get these jobs and other jobs that are outsourced by the government? I realize diversity means different things to different residents, particularly on their background or issue, but, you know, being a retired diplomat and living around the world, I understand that this could be a potential issue. And then maybe it isn't. But how do we ensure that all residents are sensitive and they are not discriminating? Generally, it's between blacks and/or people of color and whites, but there also is a potential issue of people of color discriminating against each other. And how do we make sure we keep that to a minimum in the county and the community that we live in?
Was it Gail?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much, Gail, for your question. And my apologies for my tardiness, but I do serve on the Economic Development Committee and the Health and Human Services Committee and lead. And I do also serve as lead of eliminating disparities in public health, so really excited to work on these initiatives. And in response to the question about, you know, our diversity in our procurement space, we do have an Office of Legislative Oversight, which is an incredible resource, where we can look into challenges with ensuring that diversity is happening within our business base, ensuring that our dollars are being spent equitably. There have been studies about disparities in procurement dollars and how much is going towards our businesses of color versus our other businesses. And so I can't specifically tell you what the data is, but I believe that if you go on the website, there is a most recent study, and that's why we actually now have the scoring mechanisms for different categories. For example, women, minority-owned, disabled businesses, if you're local to Montgomery County, if you've done business before. So there's a myriad of other ways that we measure our success, but we do have data that I can follow up with you on. But it is a priority for our committee, and we established the newest committee, the Economic Development Committee, where we have, it's the only committee with four council members on the committee. And because we have an Office of Racial Equity and Social Justice, we have to ensure that decisions we make go through that lens. And so our Office of Procurement has to operate in that same vein, and as do all of our departments. And so if you will follow up, I would love to delve into that information further and see what goals exist or should. Thank you.
And now I'll turn it over to the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, Councilmember Fana Gonzalez.
Yes, hi. I just want to let you know that tomorrow at 9:30 a.m., we'll have a session with the Department of Economic Development, with the Economic Development Corporation talking about this very topic and other issues. 9:30 a.m., all our sessions are streamlined, so you can watch it online. And I'm going to pass the microphone to my colleague Chair for the Government Operations Committee, because procurement is actually under that committee.
Thank you so much, Gail, for that question. So procurement does come under the Government Operations Committee, and with my colleagues, Councilmember Katz and Vice President Fritzen. This is also, this is one thing that I already have on my list for our committee to dig into. When I was the mayor in the city of Tacoma Park, I redid our procurement policy so that we specifically looked at how we can advance and make sure we had contracts with women and minority-owned businesses. And I've already started speaking with our procurement department to look at how we can advance that in the county as well. So thank you so much, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on this.
And now Councilmember Fritzen.
Yeah, I'll just quickly note, this is an area that is continuing work that has been done already. The county has an MFD program, Minority Female Disabled Businesses. That program is predicated on a disparity study, whereby law we have to prove that these communities are disproportionately impacted. That becomes the legal basis for us to have these programs. The council has advocated repeatedly to make sure that we stay current and on time with that disparity study to build on that Minority Female Disabled Business Program to give preference to those businesses, particularly through our procurement program. We also, in the last council, were working together with the county executive and Ash Shetty, the Director of Procurement, approved a local preference bill, which specifically provides preference, 10% preference, to local businesses in Montgomery County so that our procurement dollars are staying in Montgomery County. And by the way, given the fact that we are such a diverse community, that also means more opportunities for our diverse residents. There's a lot more work to do in this area, but there has been a lot of work and a lot of focus on these issues, and I know that we'll continue to do that work in the two committees that are taking it on.
Great. Marsha, thank you so much. We're ready for the next question.
Okay, next question comes from Sharon Cranford for Councilmember Jawando. Just give her a few seconds to log on.
Okay. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. I'm really very pleased that we have an up-county council. I heard recently that a proposal is going through, or is being considered by the county council, that would expand the gig economy to allow people to rent out their swimming pools for whomever, rent out their backyards for dog parks. And I wondered what the reasoning is behind it. I was kind of surprised about it.
Sure. Thank you for the question. It's my bill, so you asked the right person.
Okay.
And there are several co-sponsors, co-conspirators with me on the council.
Okay, good.
So, you know, the sharing economy is a term that has developed over the last many years of people using what they have to share with others who might not have access to certain things because of affordability. We know inflation's high, income inequality is out of control. So the short answer is, this is already happening. If you go to Swimply, type it into your browser, and right now, there's hundreds of homes in Montgomery County where you can rent a swimming pool for a number of hours. It's not allowed. It's not regulated. We don't inspect them. There's no regulatory regime, but the business, like much of the sharing economy, it starts, you know, things start, and then you have to, the government has to catch up. Similarly, there's similar things with people with dog, with using some of their space to have dog parks or to walk their dog, or this could be a lot of uses. You could rent a garage to rebuild a car because you don't have a garage for a number of hours. These are daytime uses, short-term uses. There's, and I think it's important to make sure that it's regulated, that it's not a nuisance, and that there's inspection of this happening. I think it could be a help to small business owners and to people who want to utilize these spaces that might not be able to afford it. So we're going to go through all the potential issues. I can understand, it sounds a little odd, but it is happening. And we're going to talk about it. We're going to have a press conference on March 7th where we talk about some of the benefits and how we think it can be used in an appropriate way that doesn't intrude on people's rights as homeowners. But again, it's happening, and those are several of the examples, but we're going to have robust discussion about that. And before I give the mic up, I just want to mention on the last question, I also had a bill last session of our council that increased the number of small business reserve contracts. We do $1 billion in procurement from 20% to 25% required, and requiring for small purchases, that we track those small purchases so that more of them go to women, minority-owned, female-owned businesses. So we're doing work there as well.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Jawando. Now I'm going to go ahead and have some questions here in person. With a show of hands, okay? I see some people over here. Over there, we'll get to you. Go ahead and tell me your name. I'll hold this for you, okay?
Okay. Buenas noches, consejo. Mi nombre es Rosario Reyes. Soy miembro comunitaria con casa en el área de Gager. Mi pregunta de esta noche es para cada uno de ustedes. ¿Cuándo van a implementar, verdad, la estabilización de renta para las familias militarias? Que hay familias que todavía están en deuda de la pandemia por rentas altas. Y la otra pregunta sería, ¿cuándo van a hacer una inspección profunda de los supervisores que van a chequear los apartamentos cuando tienen que ir a hacer inspección? Porque vemos que mucha gente vive en viviendas deplorables, con cucarachas, con chinchas, y la renta sube y sube y sube, pero no tenemos mantenimiento. Prácticamente como que estamos viviendo en la calle. Aparte, si no pagamos la renta, estamos siendo desalojados. Y lo que sufren estas consecuencias son nuestros niños. Porque el hecho que les falte el sustento en su casa y luego la vivienda, creo que debemos de ponerles esa mano en el corazón, especialmente hoy, que ya no somos diez, sino somos once, y entre todos, puras mujeres poderosas, que yo creo que van a llevar ese voto a decir que sí.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Whomever would like to answer that? We can actually have Lucia here interpret it, pretty much what she said, and then we'll have one of the councilmembers answer.
Thank you, Jordan. Okay, I'm going to try to translate everything. So my name is Rosario Reyes. I am asking the council, when are you going to implement the rent stabilization bills? When are you also going to make a legislation about the inspections for supervisors who go and check apartment complexes and who do not do these inspections properly? Many people live in deplorable conditions with cockroaches and with other terrible things in their apartments and with no tenant supervision. Plus, rent is going up, and we are all being evicted if we cannot pay the rent, despite it going up tremendously. Our children are the real victims in these situations. Now that the council has gone up in numbers and that we are 11 council members and the majority of women, we are asking them to please say yes and to please say yes to rent stabilization. Thank you. Thank you, Lucia. Okay.
Should I do this in Spanish? Can I answer in Spanish and then in English?
Of course, yes.
Okay. Te voy a responder primero en español. Este, dos cosas. La primera, este, I maybe I should use English first, so you know what I'm talking about. Well, I don't know. I'm just going to go Spanish first. Okay. So, la primera pregunta sobre proyectos para poder, este, estabilizar la renta. Algo viene por ahí muy pronto. Este, esto es un tema donde muchos de nosotros están bien preocupados, y estoy más que segura de que va a haber algo por ahí muy pronto. Eso es todo lo que le puedo decir. Este, so let me answer the first one in English. I said that on the rent stabilization question that she asked, I said that that's an issue that all of us are very concerned, right? And that I'm very sure that something is coming soon. That's what I said. And that I'm very sure that something is coming soon, that's what I said. En el comité que ve ese asunto, es el Comité de Planificación y Vivienda y Parques, que es el comité donde yo estoy. And the committee that first oversees anything that deals with housing is the Planning Housing and Parks Committee, which I'm a member of. And the chair is Mr. Andrew Fritzen, and he's going to speak in a second. Okay, that's what, right? La segunda pregunta que dijiste fue sobre los inspectores. Casualmente, es algo que estoy, una ley que estoy viendo ya. Una de las primeras cosas que estaba trabajando es que llegué aquí al Consejo en diciembre fue en crisis en apartamentos que están en mi distrito, tanto en Rockville, este, con el señor X, Sidney Katz. I'm talking about the issue that you and I worked on. Okay. And, y otros asuntos también en Aspen Hill, este, donde los inspectores del condado han ido, pero no han realmente hecho un buen trabajo este, para que este tipo de cosas no sigan ocurriendo. Es algo que estoy sumamente pendiente en mi comité, en el Comité de Economía que yo presido. Yo tengo un departamento que se llama DIPAS, que es el Departamento de Permiso. Y estoy tratando de tener una, estoy haciendo una reunión con ellos, pero también basándome en la parte de inspección que es con el Departamento de Viviendas, que es otro departamento, pero al final, el día es casi, casi los mismos. So, sumamente enfocado en eso y ver cómo ponemos a tener más dinero en el condado para que existan también más inspectores, okay? So es un tema crítico que estoy en top. So I was saying, let me just translate really quickly. I was saying that the issue on inspections, people living in conditions that are really, you know, horrible, and people complain, and then the county sends inspectors, but they don't really do the best job possible. So that's an issue that I'm being on top. There have been a couple cases, one in the Twinbrook area that I have worked on with my colleague, Councilmember Sidney Katz. I was on the news as well. And another issue that I'm working on right now is in Aspen Hill. And I see some of the community members from that community sitting in the back. We actually had a meeting with a deputy for Scott Burton, the Deputy for the Housing and Community Affairs Department, on Friday, and the community talking about this very issue. We had the community telling them with photos, you know, the conditions that they're living in and that the county hasn't really responded that way they should. So I'm on top of it, and stay tuned for follow-ups. And the group that I was working on on the second case is AIM, Action in Montgomery. So you guys should connect on this. Andrew, you want to say something else?
There's a number of, there are a number of colleagues who want to speak. So Councilmember Fritzen, then Councilmember Jawando, and then Councilmember Mink.
Yeah, I appreciate, as you notice, Councilmember Fannie Gonzalez, I might chair the committee, but I have to get permission from Natalie sometimes, so. And I wouldn't have it any other way, by the way. Just wanted to note the inspections issue. This is another example where the council has tried to step up in this area. We recognize that it is a huge concern. We're very concerned about it. We passed a troubled properties bill in the last council that Councilmember Hucker had led the way on through our previous committee. It identified essentially 100 properties that have ongoing chronic issues. And we looked at the numbers and the data and recognized that of the evictions, of the violations, there are overwhelming number of them or in a small number of properties that have horrific and chronic problems. There are bad landlords that we need to go after. We need to do better inspections. During COVID, some of those inspections stopped happening, and it created even more problems. And so now we really need to go back and not only catch up to the inspections that didn't happen over a period of time, but do even more inspections than we were doing before and target and identify the specific buildings and specific properties that we know are the problem, that we know are creating incredibly unsafe and unsanitary conditions for residents and step in, shut them down when necessary, to force them to get up to code when possible, and to make sure that everybody in the county is living in a safe environment. It's something that we're going to continue to focus on, something that we've tried to address and focus on, and something that you'll see us taking more action on as we move forward.
Okay. Yes. Councilmember Jawando, did you have anything?
Yes, I do, yeah, I have a lot to add, but I won't add a lot, I'll add a little. On the troubled properties, you know, that list is personal to me. I lived in two of those troubled properties as a kid. It was pretty shocking when I saw that list when we passed that bill. The fact that they were troubled 30 years ago and they're still troubled, that shows we have more work to do. We need more inspectors, not only, and we need frequency of inspection. We need to revisit that troubled properties law because sometimes people fall off for various, they have 50% or just slightly less than 50% of the problem, and they fall off the list, and then they don't need to be inspected again for another year. But what about those people that are living in those other half of those properties? So we have to revisit that. But we also have to stabilize rents. You know, we did it during the pandemic, and I led that effort along with colleagues. We will be introducing a bill soon, and we will have debate. I'm on the Housing Committee as well. And that's important. You know, our Department of Housing considers 10% constructive eviction. Me, you know, I got a letter from someone the other day, they're going up 10%, it's $200, they can't afford it. I met someone in Burtonsville the other, last year, $50. They had to move because of a $50 increase. People are on the edge. You need, if you work three full-time minimum wage jobs, that's what you need to do to be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment in this region. So we have serious problems there, and you have to have more housing. You have to have renter protection, but you need stabilization countywide, and we're going to work hard on that.
Thank you so much for that question. I like to associate myself with those comments, rent stabilization extremely urgent, extremely important, coming soon. And we look forward to having many community voices there as part of that conversation. If we cannot keep people housed in this county, what are, you know, what are we really doing here? This is, this is our job. So this is an urgent matter, and we look forward to addressing it as soon as possible. On the inspections piece, you know, we, my team recently went and we canvassed, along with members of CASA, along with other nonprofit partners, the entire enclave apartment complex that's in White Oak. And that property became significant because after there was a, there was a shooting at the Shell gas station in White Oak, the person who committed that crime, he was traced to his residence in the Enclave Apartment Building, where they found his partner who had expired previously. I'm just noting that there are kids here. So that certainly drove home that had been there for a while, not found. And so that certainly drove home that the building management there frankly had a hand in what happened at the gas station, because we should have found that the shooter's partner previously, and he should have already been in custody. There had been complaints and so on, and still the issue had not been resolved. We, when we canvassed the building, we found a property that was in very, a lot of serious conditions going on there, some fire hazard situations, many people who had had raised issues that had not been addressed that really made those homes unpleasant to live in and not up to the standards that we should be allowing in this county. So we followed up by speaking to some members of the relevant agencies, the DHCA, to find out what is the issue fundamentally? Are we, do we have the tools to hold landlords accountable and to ensure that the things that we're asking them to do are doable? Or do we not, and we're just like not using those tools enough? Or do we not have the tools? And it sounds like it's some of both. Critically, there, we do not have enough tools. We ask landlords to fix something, they have some time, we go back and check. Meanwhile, that may have gone unaddressed for that amount of time. If it remains unaddressed, then it goes to court. Then the court asks them to fix it, and now we're sitting on it again, waiting for them to still feel to do it. And then it comes back to the court again, and then the judge can decide whether to levy that fine or not. That is a very long period of time to pass for a fine that may not be high enough for a landlord to even care about. So all of this goes to show, we do not currently have enough tools to hold landlords accountable, and we are looking into enforcement mechanisms that are in play in other jurisdictions locally and across the country to see what else we can do here. Great. Thank you so much. Now we'll take another question here in person with a show of hands, okay? I do see you guys' hands, I'm going to come on over here, all right? How are you today? Go ahead and tell me your first name, and I'll hold this for you, okay?
Okay, well, all right, it's a little awkward. My name is Rosemary Arcoyan, and I live in the Goshen area. And most of the county council knows me, I think. I want to first of all say congratulations to the new six women. I expect good things from you all. And congratulations to the other council member. I didn't mean it that way, no, no.
Thank you, Rosemary, as part of the other, I appreciate it.
I have several things, so I want to talk fast. One, I'm concerned about the county council reneging on their responsibility of the ALC, Air Park Liaison Committee. I'm one of two original members of that committee. I was interviewed by the county council, and I was appointed as a resident within five miles of the airpark to represent the Goshen area, and we did accomplish a lot. You're reneging on your responsibility, county council, so try to get the ALC back again. There's a lot of problems with the airpark, we need transparency, the lead issue, the safety issue. There are a couple of individuals here, Catherine and Kevin, that can speak a little bit more to that. The other thing I need to say is I respectfully disagree with the gentleman that spoke from Tame. Mid-County Highway M83 has been on the books since 1964, longer than the ICC. It was attempted by some previous council members to get it out of the master plan. Well, they weren't allowed to do that without having a hearing, thank goodness. You just need to get on, it's only 5.6 miles. The builders said they would build, that's the only way they were able to do the Clarksburg. Clarksburg is going from 2,000 people to 40,000 or 50,000. They are using Brink-Whiteman as the de facto M83, and that's unacceptable. So you need to really do something about the, you know, finishing up. The developers did their part from Snowdon Farm Parkway, they were supposed to do it to Germantown. They got stopped at Ridge Road 27. And I really, I have lots of information on M83, as do the Greater Goshen Civic Association, so. And then the other thing is the Brink-Whiteman corridor is unsafe. There's been lots of accidents at Brink and Blunt. And the council DOT guy said they're going to lower the Brink-Whiteman to 30 miles an hour, going to put it in a speed camera and maybe a stoplight. None of that has been done yet. Now, some of that should be done quickly. So I want you all to be aware of the Brink-Whiteman, you know. The people are using our area, they avoid the weigh station. So we're getting trucks, and that bridge at Brink is falling apart. So you need to check about that. The feds are willing to pay 80%, and so why don't you get on? And don't wait until 2027, please. I know this county moves slowly, and as you all know, those of you who know me, I never, ever give up. I do my research. I do my research. And the thing is, I try to be reasonable, businesslike, and efficient. I do not lie, I have facts for everything. And knock on wood, I've got my dad's good memory. So if you guys want to ask me anything about the Air Park Liaison Committee, since 1990, I still have all the stuff at home, I can fill you all in. And I invite you to go to the airpark and check it out. We have to be, you know, worried about the safety of the individuals. And definitively, I will really haunt you all if you get rid of M83 on the master plan. You are not allowed to do that.
Thank you so much. All right, whomever would like to answer that.
Thank you, Ms. Rosemary. I enjoyed meeting you out on the campaign trail, I did not forget. My memory's pretty decent, too. But I want to let you know, of course, and I do have those documents dating back to 1990, when the Air Park Liaison Committee was formed. I do understand your concerns, and I've heard them. And to be fair, whether it's here or BWI or other airports, or like we've dealt with with National Airport, community stakeholder groups are a critical voice in being able to get at issues of concern and make sure they are surfaced. So this is top of mind for me. I do have something in the works that would sort of reformulate. I know you've been sort of carrying on with assistance from the Revenue Authority to give you an outlet, but that's not necessarily the outlet that the community desires. I also want to make sure that we take into consideration economic development, economic costs, the safety issues, both public safety and our, you know, public health. And so that is something that I am looking to redo in a new form. We just had the Transportation and Environment Committee meeting this week. I'm not on the committee, but I hustled myself upstairs so I could be there for the, for the part about the airpark as fast as I could after I finished my own committee hearing. And I did want to let you know, I did submit written testimony in support of a state bill, so Senate Bill 162. There's a corresponding House bill whose number is escaping me right at the moment. But that bill expands the Maryland Aviation Commission to include a community stakeholder voices on the Maryland Aviation Commission, because there's increased issues related to noise and other health and safety things in and around the BWI airport area. And by the way, if you listen to the public testimony on that bill hearing in the Senate, they will talk about Montgomery County as well as other surrounding counties like Howard, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Anarundel is being affected. So these are all top of mind. At the end of the day, FAA oversees all airport operations in the country. So the way to get this is to make sure we have a voice, we have FAA participation, and that we are able to surface the things that need to be done to the FAA so that they can make the appropriate changes. And this has been done successfully with other airports, and we should continue that voice for the airpark here.
Great, thank you so much. Now we're going to go ahead and go back to questions via Zoom. We'll come back to you, everybody here in person, I will try to get to everybody here. But I'm going to go ahead and toss to my colleague Mashai Salu. We have questions for Councilmembers Fannie Gonzalez and Councilmember Albinos. Mashai, to you.
Thank you, Jordan. So our next question comes from Richard Miller for Councilmember Fannie Gonzalez. We'll give Richard a few seconds.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, thank you. Thank you to the council for taking our questions tonight. This is my first time participating in county government, so I appreciate everybody's willingness to listen to us, and I'm enthused to see all the intelligent, bright faces there on stage. I want to ask a rhetorical question to get started here tonight. It has to do about zoning and the purpose of zoning. I think we all know that there is a reason for zoning. One of them is to protect the material makeup of a community. One of them is to protect the safety of a community. One of them is to protect the property value of the community. And I live in the Granby Woods section of Durwood. And ever since October of this past year, I've been disheartened by the fact that an individual has decided to turn my backyard and neighborhood into a drug and alcohol rehab facility. Now, I'd like to state the fact that I understand that drug and alcohol addiction is a problem, a huge problem in the country, and that there is a need for facilities like this in Montgomery County and around the country. I would, however, question the fact that this individual has apparently taken what used to be an elder age home, converted that to a drug and alcohol rehab, which was contested by the neighbors at the time, before I was around in 2020. County shrugged it off, apparently, went ahead with his program, did his deal. The neighbors adjoining property to that particular facility led the charge, basically saying, what's going on, we oppose this, why is this being done in our neighborhood? That individual eventually sold out to this particular proprietor in 2021. Now has two properties, who then acquired a third property next door to that property that adjoins the back of my property. So all of a sudden, we have three properties that have been turned into an enclave for drug and alcohol rehab without so much as a public hearing that I can find. drug and alcohol rehab without so much as a public hearing that I can find. And I cannot find any permitting that allows these other two properties to have made this transition. When approached, when the proprietors approached about this, he has thumbed his nose at the community and basically just proceeded ahead as if he has carte blanche to do what he wants. And my question to the council is, at what point do you get involved? And are you aware of this? Because it seems like this individual has moved with lightning speed. Once he's acquired these properties, the last one being in October, now he is actually breaking ground on the second property and building another building, apparently, to which I cannot find a permit. I will open it up to your responses. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much for the question. This is Natalie Fannie Gonzalez. I don't know if you can see me. I was on the planning board, so I'm assuming that's also why you're asking me the question. I'm not sure about this particular application, but first, they will have to go to the planning board to submit an application, and I'm not sure if that has happened already. I would love for you to perhaps, I guess the staff has your contact information, if you can please email me the case number or at least the address so I can look into it. I believe in facts and I had to see what's going on, especially when we're talking about particular properties. And there is a permitting process for this. It's not like I own the property and I'm just going to do this. It's not that simple, but I will need to look into it. And I promise I'll get back to you once I see at least the address of this property in question. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't specifically address it to you. I thought Ms. Ludicki was in the area that I'm represented by, but whoever wants to address it, it needs to be addressed. And my contact information is had by whoever organized the meeting.
I'll look into it.
Yeah, well, we're office neighbors, so we can dig into that and we can circle back with you because I'm not sure about which property you're speaking, but we're getting confirmation that we can get your information here. So thank you.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Richard.
Hold on, Mershia, one more thing.
Real quick, Mershia, just to chime in really quickly, and we will look into this specific concern. I'll just say at a high level, I appreciate you prefacing acknowledgement that there does need to be more drug and alcohol rehab centers across the county. This is a huge issue that's impacting and terrorizing families. And so, but obviously, it needs to be done in a location that's appropriate. There need to be the appropriate permits. And while I don't know what the Department of Health and Human Services' specific role is in this case, as the chair of that committee, I'll work with my colleagues and we'll look into that aspect of this as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Albernos. Our next question comes from Austin Hayman. He has a question for Councilmember Albernos. We'll give him a few more seconds to log on.
Yeah, my question is, besides affordable housing, what are the major concerns that you think that need to be addressed affecting older residents of the county?
Well, first, Austin, it's good to hear your voice. Austin, for those of you that don't know, is a longtime community advocate and has been a champion for so many things, including intergenerational programs here in Montgomery County. And all of us owe him a great debt of gratitude for that service. He's also longtime chair of the Commission on Aging. And let me say a few things. First, our aging population continues to be the fastest-growing demographic in Montgomery County. Now over 10% of our county residents are over the age of 65, and that number will increase to 17% in the next seven years. And so it's incumbent upon us as a county government to make sure that we do everything possible to allow people here in our community to age with grace and dignity and that they have vibrancy. And so we must take steps in addition to housing, which is a very significant issue and the issue that we hear the most among our aging population, is we also have to address affordability. I want to thank Councilmember Katz to recently introduce legislation with myself and a number of us as cosponsors to look at the tax incentives that we currently provide and provide a larger one for those that are in their homes. But we have to do much more than that. We also have to address the issues of security and safety, which remain very significant in our communities. We have to ensure that our communities are walkable and that people have access to critical services. We have a number of individual great programs and services such as the Villages Program, but those need to be expanded in a systemic way and especially reach parts of our community that don't have the same infrastructure to be able to support particularly our minority communities and our aging communities. So those are some of the issues. The other two issues that we often hear about are people who are having a hard time finding affordable care for their loved ones, either in their homes or even outside of their homes. There's also an issue of recruitment and retention of the staff within the organizations that are providing that service. And so we need an all-hands-on-deck approach. And when appropriate, I think it's in the public's interest for the county to explore ways of meeting the operators of these different businesses part of the way. And if we need to underwrite some of the costs so that we can provide some of this additional care, it's important for us to do so because it's not just morally our responsibility to take care of our seniors. It's also, it makes economic sense because we have to make sure that we prevent them from becoming in crisis. And we also, I'll say this finally, and I've shared this story before, but my mom took care of her parents, my grandparents, until they passed away. My grandmother had Alzheimer's, my grandfather had Parkinson's, and for about 14 years, my mom was their primary caretaker. And she was exhausted. It was incredibly hard work, incredibly emotional work. And we need to look at opportunities like adult medical daycare. We need to look at more support in home. And so those are just some of the many issues that we know are facing our senior community. And I'll end on a high note. I recently had the opportunity to visit the new downtown Silver Spring Recreation Aquatic and Senior Center, which will be opening soon. And we need more facilities like that here in the upper part of the county. And I am fully committed to making sure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Albernos. Just to let everybody know, we have a hard stop at 8:30. So at the show of hands, I'm going to try to get at least two more questions here. Okay, I did see a gentleman on the side of the room. I'll be back over here for you guys, okay? How you doing, sir?
Yes, you, I'm talking to you.
So I'll go ahead and hold this for you, okay? And you can go ahead. If you want to sit, just let me know, whatever works better. Okay, I'll hold this for you.
Good evening. I'm Norm Loventhal. I met Councilwoman Sales on the campaign trail. I think Mr. Fritzen used to represent my district, but I've been a homeowner in Montgomery County for 50-some years. We started when we got married at the Pavilion Apartments, which is Montrose and Rockville Pike. We've owned a home ever since, but we just sold our house in Potomac. We now live in the Grand, which is not so grand anymore. And when I moved in, we had to sell our house because I tried to get, let me preface this by saying, I thought Montgomery County and Maryland were the most progressive in the area. They're not, by far. When I tried to get a jumbo loan, a reverse mortgage, to take out so I could stay in my house, it was not available in Maryland. Not because the law precluded, but because the legislature and the insurance companies were in cahoots and they didn't want them. They didn't want any jumbo mortgages. So I sold my house and it was, I made a nice profit. I'm not complaining about that. What I'm complaining about is I moved into the Grand because it looked like a beautiful building. We found out very quickly that it's not so beautiful and there's lots of problems there. And I formed the Grand Tenants/Residents Association because I was fed up with their nonperformance. You have a lot of residents in these high-end apartments which are very unhappy. Now, we don't face the same issues that some of these other people face, which is much more troubling, I agree. But in looking at my lease, when I moved from my house, and I'm a lawyer, when I moved from my house to my apartment, I looked at the lease and I was astounded at what I saw, but I had to sign it anyway because they send you a lease on a DocuSign, which doesn't allow you any negotiation. You can't talk about it. You can't modify it. You can't do anything. So it's either sign or look for something else. Well, we were in a hurry, so we signed. And afterwards, I got fed up with the whole nonsense. And I decided that this place needed an association of people to get together, much like other communities. And we formed the Grand Residents Association to contest these conditions. Now, we don't have roaches everywhere, but dead mice were found, dead rats and other things. The garage is a mess, all these things that need to be attended to. But the problem we have is that the remedies available in the county or the state are horrible. You need laws that permit the tenants to withhold rent. That's the only thing that's going to motivate these people. Now, when I looked at the lease carefully, this lease is unconscionable. I think if I filed a lawsuit, and by the way, the gentleman who raised the last question, file a lawsuit if you wanted a response. The lawsuit would at least allow tenants to have a voice and get some answers. The problem with the county is I'm not so sure you have the authority to do what you want to do. Because when I raise the issue of just cause termination and rent control, I get, well, that's the state area. And the state has a law precluding the county from doing something individual. I don't know what the law is on that. I don't really care. My concern is, is that the leases that we are asked to sign from the most, the highest end to the lowest end are unconscionable. They shouldn't be allowed. And the fact is, in reviewing my lease carefully, 19 single-spaced pages, 28 clauses, only one clause says the landlord shall, and it only says the landlord shall comply with state and county law, that's all. Everything else is on the tenant. Mold exists in many of the apartments. It's the tenant's responsibility under this lease to take care of the mold. That's absurd. Now, I'm not asking you to do something you're not allowed to do, but what I'd like the county to do is, one, I know you have in the past supported rent stabilization of a kind and also just cause, so that people cannot be kicked out of their apartments without a reason. Now, I know there are two bills pending and we intend to present testimony of that, if they'll allow us. And my question is, you know, there used to be a movie with Kevin Spacey, who was Kaiser Sose? I'd like to know who Kumar Bhavre is. Because that guy has stopped every sensible legislation. The answer I get from people who may not know is that he's in the pocket of landlords. Well, anybody who reads this lease will agree that the landlords have control in this state, and that's abomination. Now, I'll finish my question. Whose idea was it to put bike lanes on Old Georgetown Road?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to answer that.
Well, just like in that movie, there was a plot twist at the very end. But I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of the Housing Committee, Councilmember Fritzen.
I'm happy to handle the Old Georgetown Road Bike Lanes question, too, and then I'll turn it over to the current council member who represents that area as well, who also represent the Grand, as you know. I used to represent the community, very aware of some of the issues and concerns. Now, Councilmember Stewart represents North Bethesda. We've changed, as you know, and also Old Georgetown Road as well. I'll start with the first piece. I think you heard earlier tonight, a number of the areas of focus for the council, taking up some of the things that are within our power, some of the things that are not within our power. You are right, there's a state law on just cause to allow for local jurisdictions to put in place their own just cause eviction, which currently is not allowed. And so that is at the state level that you'll be testifying. As you noticed, you heard earlier, some of the comments that were being made on looking at rent stabilization issues. We've been having an ongoing discussion at the county council about that, that started with a roundtable discussion, a panel discussion at the Planning, Housing and Parks Committee. And you heard from several colleagues that there is an interest in moving some different proposals forward, that stay tuned on those issues as well. Also, the troubled properties and some of the other dynamics and some of the tools in our toolkit. There are limits on what we are allowed to do. All of our powers come from the state, but there are things that we want to look at to build on that troubled properties law. Actually, when you heard Councilmember Mink talk about the enclave, I think there was 2,700 complaints that came from that one facility alone. That's what led to the troubled property bill. So we're going to be looking at those issues as we move forward. On Old Georgetown Road, the reason why that was put in place, it was done, and the decision, whose idea was it? It was State Highway Administration's decision. It's a state road. That was done in conjunction with the District 16 delegation and my office, talking about some of the safety issues on Old Georgetown Road. We have two dead teenagers who died on Old Georgetown Road, Enzo Alvaranga and Jake Castle. They died about three years apart. Jake was the Churchill Bulldog, really incredible young man. He was biking on the sidewalk, which you're supposed to do on Old Georgetown Road. There was an obstruction in the sidewalk. He swerved out of the way of the obstruction in the sidewalk and ended up falling, and a car ran him over and killed him. Subsequent to that, my office with the District 16 delegation held a community walk. I walked with Jake's parents along the area where he was killed. Ultimately, the State Highway Administration, in looking at the different options, decided to implement a .6-mile road diet that included a bike lane that was unprotected at the time. The purpose of that really wasn't to create a bike lane. The purpose of it was to create a buffer. Because the current condition on that roadway, like on so many roadways, particularly state roadways in Montgomery County, there is no buffer. So if you fall, whether you're walking or you're biking, if a car is doing exactly what a car is supposed to be doing, you're probably going to die. And lots of people have died. Three years later, a little less than three years later, Enzo Alvaranga was riding his bike, 19-year-old, was riding his bike just up the road, just north of that area. And there was a shrub that was not properly kept and went into the sidewalk. And he swerved out of the way of that shrub, fell off of his bike, and he was killed by a car instantly. So there was another safety walk that happened, and ultimately, the .6 miles got protected, you know, pylons. And then the State Highway Administration had another public meeting and ultimately decided they were going to implement a protected bike lane to create a buffer. Lots of community concerns have come out of that, of what impact it is on traffic, on whether or not it is appropriate to take away a lane of traffic. I think that there is room to discuss what is the best approach to address these issues, but the response can't be nothing. Because the status quo is killing people, particularly vulnerable people, lots of children, lots of people who take the bus, who rely on walking or biking on roadways in order to get to their jobs. And we have a major problem in the county that we need to address. So the State Highway Administration has committed, they made some changes to the signage, they've committed to studying the outcomes of, you know, what this impact is having on traffic to determine whether or not, you know, additional changes and adjustments need to be made. That will be ongoing. But like I said, ultimately, I think it's an open conversation to determine whether or not changes should be made or can be made, but the outcome here can't be nothing because the status quo is completely unacceptable.
Thank you so much, Council... Thank you so much, Council Vice President Fritzen.
This is my district. If I could just chime in, thank you. And I did receive your email, and we were going over it in our office today with our staff. And I really appreciate you laying out all these issues in an email to me. And I will say, I think this is a great question to wrap up on because you brought together so many of the different things that we have talked about tonight, and I look forward to working with you. You know, completely agree with you on just cause. I've been testifying on just cause for a number of years, and I know this county council supports that as well. We'd love to talk to you more about withholding of rent. There are a lot of ideas of how to put withheld rent into escrow and move that forward. And then I'll just say, the bike lanes, thank you to Council Vice President Fritzen for discussing that. And I just want to underscore, since we inherited this district and that area, that a number of things that our office has been doing, and I look forward to working with people in the area. As Councilmember Fritzen said, we push forward to get better signage done. We worked with the commander in District 2 for the police department and increased traffic enforcement in the neighborhoods because people were complaining about cars turning off of Old Georgetown Road. And so we worked with them to increase traffic enforcement in the areas. In addition, we were told by State Highway that they would give us data when they were done with the full installation. done with the full installation, and that was going to be late spring and early summer. And we said that was not acceptable, that we needed data earlier to find out how this was working. And so we should have that much earlier in a few weeks to look at what the impact is. And so again, I thank Councilmember Friedson for his partnership, not just on this issue, but on other issues and for you raising that this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. I did see we had more questions, but we're unfortunately out of time. That does not mean we will not hear from you. We will be displaying the council members' information on the screen. So that does conclude the questions we have this evening. Thank you all for joining us. Right now, we're going to put the contact information for all the council members. It's going to be displayed on the screen. So again, that doesn't mean we won't hear from you at all. So I'm going to go ahead and toss back to Council President Evan Glass for closing remarks. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, everybody, for joining us this evening. I also do want to make sure that we recognize that Joseph E. Young from Congressman Jamie Raskin's office has been listening virtually. So, Joseph, thank you for joining us. But the conversation tonight that we've had has been about housing and highways and public safety and public health, about permitting, procurement, and there's a lot of other conversations that I know you want to engage in, and we are all here to engage. And this is the start of the conversation. For those of us who've returned, you know who we are. I'm pleased to be joined by six new council members, and I'm pleased that you've gotten to know a little bit about them tonight. Please reach out to all of us. And one of the next points of conversation that will be happening is on March 15th, the county executive will be introducing his budget. Look at the budget, read some news articles about it, contact us, and talk with us about what you think is in that budget, what should be in that budget, what you don't like about that budget. That's going to be the next big topic of conversation here in Montgomery County, and all of us look forward to continuing that engagement with you. So thank you all coming out tonight, and we look forward to continuing that conversation.